So, welcome to our guests in the public gallery. We'll start with our ordinary council meeting agenda. Our acknowledgement. We, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two, we have privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of the meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy. However, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. Item number three, apologies, we have nil. Item number four, declaration of conflict of interest. Councillors, do we have a declaration of conflict of interest today? Nil. Item number five, on page number one, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Are there any items of the minutes that are opposed?
I'll move minutes.
All right, do we have a second? Thank you. We'll go to the vote now. All in favour? Against? Nil. Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Item number six, public question time. Do we have any public question today?
We do not, Madam Mayor.
We do not, all right. So we'll move on to page number two. Item number 7.1, petition. Petition for traffic light installation, Channel Road and Archer Street intersection. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Kemokiev, thank you. Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Hazelman, thank you. Councillor Kemokiev, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to thank the community members that have looked up the 844 signatures. It's an important thing to happen within the community, clearly safety. There'll be certainly some suggestions and some reasons we certainly need to look at this petition and have further community consultation and discussion in regard to this request.
Thank you. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor, councillor O'Keefe was cabinet-will.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? No? Would any councillor like to speak for the petition?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak for the motion. It's obviously a straightforward process in noting the petition that we've received, but for someone who uses that road two or three times a day, I can assure the listeners out there and those people in the gallery and other councillors that there is a need to have some control over that particular intersection. There are a considerable number of elderly people who live on Channel Road these days, that has occurred over the last five to six years, and I think that for their safety, something should be looked at, and I'm sure that our staff will do that in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you very much, councillor Jovanetti. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? No? All right. We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Right. Councillors, on page number three, we have item number 8.1. Contract 1958, supply and delivery of concrete, panel of suppliers. There's a recommendation on page three. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I'm happy to move that recommendation, Madam Mayor, on page three.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Councillor Kemokiev? Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, this is a process that we've gone through to determine who's going to supply us with concrete over the next five years. It's a contract worth $940,000. The council has decided to appoint a panel, so it's not just one contractor that's going to be the supplier. It'll be two, it'll be Mawson and Sons of Shepparton and Borough Construction Materials of Shepparton. So it's great that there are two companies that are associated with the area that are getting the contract.
Thank you, thank you councillor Jovanetti. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak for the motion?
I think most of that's been covered, other than the current contract will expire on the 6th of December 2019, hence why this has come up as a recommendation.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay. So we will now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Okay. All right, we'll now move on to page number seven. Item 8.2, contract 1959, supply and delivery of bitumenist products. We have a recommendation on page number eight. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
I'll move the recommendation as a motion as it reads on page eight.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson, thank you. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd like to draw attention to the environment's sustainability impacts. It's quite a hefty contract, but in the end it becomes quite efficient when you bring in environmental issues. It will provide the provision of a trial to use recycled tyre crumb rubber bitumen through the use of this. So rather than relying on raw materials, we'll be able to reduce our landfill through recycled waste, which saves us EPA costs, fees, and valuable air space. So I think it's a very innovative way of doing our boring old roads.
Thank you councillor Summer. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, it is a very big contract, 8.25 million over five years. It's an enormous amount of money, but that is the sort of dollar that we do spend on our roads. So as councillor Summer said, if we can be using some of our by-product on the road, that could ticken two birds on stone first, but yeah. Looking forward to the outcome and hopefully we have a good road service then in three years. A ten-year, really, for the last more than three years.
All right, thank you very much councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? No? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. We'll now go to page number 11. Item number 9.1, section 86, special committee membership, Dukie. There's a recommendation on page 11. Would a councillor like to move the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation printed on page 11.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second? Councillor Adam, thank you very much. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, in doing so, I would commend the six people who have put their names forward and will form the committee for the next four years in acknowledging that there's some very well-known Dukie names amongst them. And like a lot of these smaller communities, it's the same people, time and time again, who put their hands up and take on these jobs. And I think we can acknowledge the work that this committee has done out of Dukie with Capital Works improvements out there over the years. And it's quite a, well, it's an excellent facility at this day and age. So we commend that, the six people that put their names forward, and I would commend the motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, no, not at all, thank you, just ditto to what councillor Hazelman said.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just one thing, I mean, it's worth noting that this is a four-year term, which is sensational to think that these committee members are going to commit to another four years. So well done, and congratulations, and thank you to that committee.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? No? All right, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. So item number 10.1 is next, on page number 15. That is about risk management policy. We have a recommendation on page 15. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Oraswari, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as contained on page 15, that the council adopt the updated risk management policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson, thank you. Councillor Oraswari, would you like to speak for the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it speaks for itself.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak for the motion?
I don't think he's covered it all, so I'll just check a couple of things in. It has to be updated every two years, and this is what we're currently doing. The two things I've identified, we have to update the health and safety and our compliance, which is happening in this policy. Very minor, but something that has to regularly happen.
Thank you very much.
I've covered it all now, I believe.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. On page 17, we have item number 10.2, October 2019 Monthly Financial Report. And there's a recommendation on page 17. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Oraswari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation on page 17 that the council receive and note the October 2019 Monthly Financial Report.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Summer? Councillor Oraswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd like to invite through you, Madam Mayor, Mr Tysoe, to give us an overview, if you would.
Thank you. Yes.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and through you to the councillors. This month, there's no significant variances that I need to report. You'll recall at last month's council meeting, we adopted the revised forecast, and at this stage, straight after, the month after the forecast adoption, everything is running pretty much in line. On the first page, it's just worth noting a couple of things. Our year-to-date actuals in terms of operating performance are running very high at the moment. That's because we recognise all of our rates income in the first month of the financial year. That will gradually diminish over the years as it comes in line, and we expect to get pretty close to our target band for that. It's also just drawn to your attention in summary debt is this 3.7 million sitting in outstanding debts for the zero to 30 days. That's nothing to be alarmed about. It's a grant that we've invoiced the state government for for the construction of this Shepparton Art Museum, and that installment for the grant makes up the bulk of that 3.7 million dollars. Capital performance is running pretty much where we expect it to be for this time of year, although we continually monitor to make sure that our capital spend is running in accordance with projections. And that's about all for this month. It's fairly straightforward report.
Thank you, Mr Chris Tysoe. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Quickly, there were a few unfavorable variances, such as electric vehicles, IT programs, and materials and service, I think, was high, and some projects carried forward that somehow weren't accounted for when we adopted the budget. Being a rate-capping environment and having multiple large projects on the go, we may need to look closer at this, but we're noting it and notes.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. So on page 19, item number 10.3, contracts awarded under delegation and contracts advertised but yet to be awarded. Councillors, there's a recommendation on page 19. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as a motion is printed on page 19 of the agenda.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Keefe, thank you. Okay, councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is a monthly report and provides information for people so they're aware of what is moving through the system. It's interesting to note that as the Capital Works program starts to ramp up, there's sort of pages of tenders that have been advertised, not yet awarded, but that are being under consideration, which is good to see that that work is progressing. It probably indicates that in terms of considering and awarding those contracts, we're getting closer to a general meeting.
Thank you. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think it's a great opportunity to talk about some of the investments that we're putting into some of our communities. It's a broad range of projects. It's great to see that the designs of fine installation of shade sales for Acadia and Merriman and Cailla, I'm hoping that'll be done for summer, and by the reserve design, by the reserve of the ravine stage three redevelopment. So there's some really exciting projects. Those ones have been awarded, the next two pages are still under delegation to be awarded. Construction of the Taturra Library, that's a long time coming, so we're all looking forward to certainly seeing something happening there. But if you go through, I mean, there's some incredible opportunities for some of these communities to really upgrade their facilities and the roads, whatever they're doing at that time.
That's good, thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes councillor Patterson?
I'd just support other councillors and the Taturra Library, a great initiative as we said, but also the construction of the War Memorial, which has had a big input from the local community. I've pushed it, I've driven it, and the council's credit would support them all the way, and continue to do that, and hopefully we'll be able to go to that next stage too. That is very important. It doesn't, apparently the Senate doesn't recognise anyone that wasn't killed in the first war. We need to update that and get it up to speed. Every year, Merriman Stadium's that day, it is, and the crowds are getting bigger and bigger and bigger, which is great to see, and in the end, we'll have something the whole town will be proud of. So one of several, and as we know, as we move through the financial year, there'll be more of these filled. Couple of them have been filled already today, supplying concrete and bitumenist substances. Yeah, they'll all get ticked off and adopted, and that's what we're about.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes councillor Summer?
Thank you, since we're pointing out contracts, contract number 1981, design and construction of solar PV systems at Shepparton, Sow Yards, and Aqua Moves. Many people in the community do ask us why we don't put solar on our own buildings, so it's really pleasing to see that that's being done, particularly as this council stands for climate change in a lot of ways.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? No? All right, we'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. So on page 23, we have item number 10.4, gifts and benefits policy. There's a recommendation on page 23. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'll move the recommendation on page 23, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Oraswari, thank you.
Yes, it's about gifts and our gift policy, and the executive summary reads, "Following the busy Christmas period, where a number of gifts were received, some queries arose." I certainly missed out there, I've hung out at more Christmas parties, but I did receive a thing, and no one, but I know I did. So it's probably staff that are receiving it, but I know it's very important. We're well and truly educated in the fact that if we do receive something over the value of about 25 cents, we've got to hand it in to staff, and they use it to fundraise for a Christmas party. Exactly, yeah, so it's something every council, well, not every council, the Yarra council are currently having problems with apparently, but as far as we know, we're not to be receiving presents and gifts. And yeah, so it's a good policy to update and revisit every couple of years.
Thank you very much. Councillor Oraswari, would you like to speak to the motion? No? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there is one change that I've noticed in this policy update, is that we now also need to declare where no hospitality was received. So in saying that if we go to a dinner, and we don't actually eat that dinner on that night, we actually have to declare that we didn't receive anything. So it's becoming very tight, but it's a local government policy that we have to abide by, and it's very important that it's transferred. And councillors do know, and we certainly do, hand in anything that we do receive at any point of time. But yeah, having to declare that we didn't eat or we didn't receive anything that was available on that night, that's an updated to this policy, so interesting one.
All right, thank you very much. Would a councillor, would any councillor like to speak to the motion? No? All right, we'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. On page 25, we now have item number 11.1 to consider. It's about Tatura Park Advisory Committee Casual Vacancy Application. There's a recommendation on page 25. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the motion or the recommendation on page 25.
Thank you councillor Adam. Do I have a second?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Councillor Hazelman, thank you. Yes councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
I don't have a lot to say, Madam Mayor. Angelo Torrison has been selected, or he's put himself forward to be on the committee. He will be appointed, and he will join Carolyn Colby, Karina Damchki, Daryl Eaton, Sean O'Shaughnessy, David Quick, former councillor Kevin Ryan, and Carol Walters. That's quite an interesting group, because I'm on that committee, so I welcome the appointment of Angelo.
Thank you. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
It's been well covered, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? No? Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item number 11.2, on page number 29, sorry, page number 28, Shepparton Statement, The Path Forward. There's a recommendation on page number 28. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that the council, number one, note progress to date on Shepparton Statement, and number two, to continue to implement actions that will encourage young people to have their say on climate change and the environment, and suggest actions that can be undertaken to mitigate against the impacts of climate change and ensure a more sustainable future in our community.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Do I have a second?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Jovanetti. Right, councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Climate change is a hot topic, pardon the pun, at the moment. It's at the forefront of many conversations across the community. The Shepparton Statement itself was created as a platform for the youth of Great Shepparton to have input into environmental statement, designed to influence decisions and policy on climate change. We have seen a lot of our youth across the community, from primary schools to young adolescents, participating in the Shepparton Statement, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the next six months will bring. I've had six months working on this, and look forward to continuing to implement our youth, I would say, but also for the council to be more involved in climate change as a whole.
Thank you, thank you very much. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just briefly, I concur with what councillor O'Keefe has already mentioned. It's great that we are working with kids in the schools to get their input into this Shepparton Statement. The council has been criticised in some quarters for not doing enough, but I think that once people look at our record of what we have been doing, and we heard earlier tonight, having panels put on the Aqua Moves as well as the Sow Yards, thank you, didn't it, as well as another, a multitude of other initiatives, I think that the Shepparton Statement is part and parcel of us moving forward in this particular issue.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor Absoa. First and foremost, I want to make it very, very, very clear that this is not an objection to young people having a voice, which is generally what some people come back with, and it's certainly not an objection to the theory of climate change either. I'm simply objecting because I don't believe we consulted enough with young people prior to deciding on this topic being a topic of interest to them. The Shepparton Statement idea came from the organisation. Councillor and young people didn't really have involvement in that idea. So we've run with it, we've packaged it into our youth strategy, and now we're being asked to note and continue it today. But I think being about young people, the topic should have been decided by them, not necessarily us. And I think it's difficult to unpack the intent of the Shep Statement other than it being vaguely connected to climate change. This report in front of us lists reasons why we should continue, but I find them to be quite sparse and rely heavily on case studies. So they're single people doing single things, it's not a group. And I'm even listed in there for attending a Green Day at Gobber Valley Grammar School because I went along trying to see what it was about, but that doesn't automatically mean I'm in full support. Social media content has been fairly average, I'm sorry to say, and I believe it's being managed by adults, not young people. Particular concern is one Instagram image, which I've mentioned and mentioned. It says, "Climate change keeps me up at night", so it's quite alarmist, and to me, it's a red flag. We know that we live in an era when internet messages cause mass public hysteria, and I wonder if this is the kind of anxiety we want to inflict on our next generation. I think if we want serious advice on mitigating climate change, because it is a serious issue, we should be asking experts and following through with what they say. So climate change, the end of the world, it's a debate as old as human history. It needs to be handled delicately. I do not want to see our kids living in fear, striking school, or staying awake at night. And I certainly do not want to be responsible for post-traumatic mental health problems later in life. Yes, we must all work together on environmentally sustainable solutions as a matter of urgency, but this can only be achieved with balanced and rational discussions, which I'm not seeing in the social media posts. There's potential to untap environmental leadership roles in young people through an infinite number of ventures, but this particular one does not feel right to me. So I'm afraid I'm a no. I know it means well, but I just think it sends the wrong message.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
I'll speak to the motion, Madam Mayor. To me, Facebook and whatever else you want to look at, there's very small percentage of population that are thinking about the problem. I don't want to get into that argument, but to me, what this is, is putting a platform there for young people, if they want to become involved, the hardest
The hardest step for them is to find out how they become involved. And that, to me, is why this is set up, to give them the opportunity to become involved. They can make up their own minds, they can do their own research, et cetera. We're not telling them that the world's going to end in sixteen days, sixteen years or a hundred and sixty years, but tell them this is a platform you can use and go and have a look and you think about it yourself and, you know, come up with your own decisions. But this is very much a seeding programme. I can't see us running with this in five years' time. It's very much setting it up, getting it going and leading the youth, who will run it, take over and do it.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to move, to speak against the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor Sema. I would just like to agree with a lot of what Fern has said and note that council has organised this programme and actually employed a part-time person to contact all the schools and lead the way in this statement. And I believe it is now up to the young people to run with this and to progress the initiative and form a committee of their own, work together without having the influence of council, telling them what's happening and what to do. So I agree with the statement, it's been okay, but I think it's now time for the council to step away and let the kids do their own work and see how it goes from there.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I think I will.
Yes, councillor Adam?
We're getting sidetracked here. I mean, the actual motion is to note the progress to date from the Shepparton Statement. This statement provides a platform, as councillor Summer said. Whether the assertion that it's been manipulated or the younger people have been manipulated to actually voice our concerns through them, I think is a little bit harsh. I think the platform is set and now, as councillor Shelley Sutton said, that yes, we do encourage them to take, take the next step and move forward. So I do support it. I only wish it had been the Greater Shepparton Statement, but that has been addressed earlier on as to why that couldn't be the case. But I would have liked to have seen Greater Shepparton, because it is a platform for all of Greater Shepparton youth, not just Shepparton City.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to use your right of reply?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I encourage everyone to go to the website and have a look at the kids and what they've got to say. And I think myself being out on the field in regard to working with the Shepparton Statement, it's got to be a positive thing to teach kids about recycling and to teach kids about climate change. I mean, it's often the youth are the voices that we want to hear. They're the ones that need to lead the way. And I think councillor Summer's coming to ask the experts, no, this is not what Shepparton Statement is about. It's about the youth actually finding their way and telling us and teaching us about perhaps what we haven't done in this space in the past. So I think, you know, a youth, a young person, we had Bob Geldof in Shepparton recently and he was very impressed by the, as he would be, of the Shepparton Statement, spoke to a couple of our teenagers and was very, very impressed by the initiative and by the opportunity to encourage, you know, children to learn more, to encourage our youth to have a better understanding. Council's about rats and rubbish and, you know, we need to really make sure that children do understand. When I sat with a group of kids at Wilmot Row, they were talking about the colours of the bins. They were talking about recycling and plastic and having a much broader understanding that I certainly had when I was at primary school. So I encourage the youth to learn more and I certainly encourage further discussion so that we can have a voice for, the children can have a voice moving forward in regard to climate change. I don't think we want to stop this. I think we need to continue.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Keefe. So we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against? Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, so on page number thirty-seven, we have item number eleven point three, Major and Minor Events. Sorry, that's page number thirty-six. We have item eleven point three, Major and Minor Events Grants Programme Round One, 2019-2020. And there's a recommendation on page thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Madam Mayor, I'll move that recommendation. It's printed on pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Thank you, councillor Hazeman. Do I have a second? Councillor Oriswari, thank you. Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. I think each year we're seeing more and more demand, judging by the number of applications for this grants programme and indeed our other grants programmes as well. This particular round, we're funding some nineteen particular organisations and events across Greater Shepparton. There's a diversity of events that have been there. It's pleasing to see that there is a really good cross-representation across the community of people who are making application for this funding, whether it be sporting clubs, community groups or special interest groups. And that's fantastic and that the grants programme continues to grow in the way that it has. Look, I think we can, you know, we can talk about some of the individual projects which are significant. The overall amount of money is relatively minor in relation to council's overall budget, but extremely important for each of these groups who have been able to get funding that will enable them to facilitate and carry out the events that they want to do.
Thank you, councillor Hazeman. Councillor Oriswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, look, in today's society, fundraising of any sort can be challenging. And I think the council showing a level of support of those in relation to the grants programme is reflective of the positive council.
Thank you. Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? No? Would a councillor like to speak to the motion?
I'll speak to the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's really great to note some of these events. You know, we've got some of the service clubs, we've got the Sudanese Community Association. It's such a broad variety of people that we actually support. And I think it really goes to show that just a little bit, often commit a lot to some of these clubs, it means that they can have these events. This past year, I was actually at the Northern Victoria Sled Dog Club event and that attracts a lot of people to our region, as a lot of events do. But I know that that club said that, you know, $2,000 to them is quite significant and it really helps support the event. So often we look at this and think, you know, $1,000, $500, it isn't a lot. But as I said, a little bit often does mean a lot to these organisations, the small clubs through to community events. So it's a great initiative. We can support people within our community and people visiting our community.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes, councillor Summer?
I love how we give these out presents. It is important and it's great for socialising and raising awareness and all the wonderful things. There were twenty-one applications and nineteen were successful, which is good to see, except considering the restrictions on the budget, we may, well, a lot of people asked for more than we were able to give them. But I don't think that's going to make these events unviable. The events team obviously have a very strong history in supporting these groups and they know what, what they need. And I'd like to see each of them go ahead and if for any reason they didn't, that should possibly come back to us so we can think about perhaps offering a full amount to less people.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Right. Next is item number eleven point four on page fifty-four. Planning application, 2018, two one eight, to use and develop land for an abattoir at six thirty Lancaster, Murupna Road and eleven hundred Malkai Road. Peter Harriet, Mr Peter Harriet, would you like to make some clarification on this recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would. On pages fifty-four and sixty-three of the agenda, it states that the abattoir will operate twenty-four hours a day. The EPA have now informed council that the proposed operating hours for Meatworks are two hundred and seventy-five days a year, from Monday to Friday, twelve hours per day and some Saturdays, with a period of shutdown for maintenance. Not the twenty-four hours a day as specified by the EPA in the report. And before commencement, the applicant must submit a plan to satisfy the EPA in this regard. The, and that would include the planned operating schedule for the facility where those hours would be taken care of. So, Madam Mayor, I just need councillors to note those changes.
Thank you very much, Mr Peter Harriet. So we have got a recommendation on page fifty-five, actually from page fifty-five to page fifty-nine. We have a recommendation. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page fifty-five through to fifty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Patterson, would you like to move to, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge that we had fifteen objectors and I understand them objecting. If it was next to me, I'm probably going to be in a hurry to have an abattoir next to me, but unfortunately, it has to go somewhere. As a councillor, we're charged with improving the whole municipality and sometimes that means making unpleasant decisions for people that are living close by. The fifteen objections range from dust, hard land values, smell, traffic, what's, you know, there was sixteen, or fifteen, sorry. Council, to its credit, have done a lot of work with a lot of agencies that have gone out and addressed those issues. All the relevant referral organisations that we've had to deal with have all ticked it off. Basically, the big one which really does govern is the EPA. And I've given a clean bill of health and ticked it off and said it'll be fine. So, you know, if we don't pass this and it happened to go to VCAT, we would be looking pretty silly because EPA is a governing body on this and we would, would have no, no chance of defending the decision. On the back of my mind, there's another concern, the fact that this area is a dairy area. It's a very good dairy area, you know. Gills and Lancaster, Merrickham, that whole area has been very productive in the dairy industry a long time. And as we all know, the dairy industry is really struggling at present and there's, there's lots of dairies that closed. I know for a fact my own family have struggled with it. So there is a need to have some jobs available for people that do have to move off their farm. And this is, you know, this is going to employ a hundred and twenty people when it's completed. There's been questions of queue fever and all those other things, which have been addressed and they're all outside the minimum area. So it really does, lack of a better word, it gets a clean bill of health, but it's getting kicked off by all the relevant agencies. There isn't one there that has an issue that hasn't been addressed and there's been lots of, lots of issues. There's pages of them that feed through. It's been a long process. So, yes, I do support it. I'd like to move that bill.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not often that I fully agree with councillor Patterson, but on this occasion, I do, one hundred percent. This motion is quite comprehensive, as councillors can see and as the general public can also see. All the boxes have been ticked and yes, it is, I am empathetic to the actual people who do live in and around the area. Sure, they've got some concerns and I appreciate that. At the end of the day, councils, we're here to try and sort out decisions that are for the greater good in this instance. As Dennis pointed out, which is a key point, a lot of farmers are struggling in there, not just that area, but all around the state with the water situation as it is. And to provide a hundred and twenty jobs, that could actually, you know, save effectively dozens and dozens of families from ruin. So from that point of view, it's very positive. As you can see, the conditions applied to this with, with all sorts of different things on control of lights bill, landscaping, these things have all been addressed. All the statutory bodies have approved it. For this to go to VCAT, as Dennis said, we would look not only silly, but would be an absolute waste of rate payer's money and time to do that. So whilst I do empathise with the people involved, I'm hoping that these conditions will actually address many of the concerns they do have.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Yes, councillor Summer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a conscious vote more than anything. It's probably not a popular decision in a regional area like ours, so it might not make any difference to the outcome, but I feel like I need to explain why I'm objecting. Early in my first term, I spoke in favour of a proposed broiler farm and after debate, I did end up objecting. At the time, the broiler farm ticked all the planning regulations and I thought VCAT would approve it anyway, which is what we're doing right now with same arguments. But the truth was that animal rights was an issue in the back of my mind and I didn't get the opportunity to speak about it then because I spoke in favour. So I'll do that. I'll take the opportunity. Reasoning behind that in context is my introduction to abattoirs. I was a student out of Anara Technical College when our class was taken on a tour of the local abattoir. I guess teachers believed it was educational and we probably didn't have the same legal requirements we do today. And one abattoir worker thought it would be hilarious to show us kids how the bolt gun worked. So here he is grinning, shot a cow in the back to paralyze it and then he shot it in the head. Now, to him, that meant nothing. He was so desensitized that he's comfortable doing that in front of schoolchildren who have no exposure. So my point to that is that once inside an abattoir, animals are no longer treated as living creatures and all the regulations in the world can't stop abuse like this from happening. And we're talking about three thousand sheep on a daily basis. A recent case in point is the Merrimist Abattoir in Queensland this year that took retired horse racers. Neighbours described horses screaming at all hours of the night. They used the word screaming. Footage showed staff kicking, beating, shocking and verbally abusing horses before slaughtering them in front of other horses. I won't go into more detail, but descriptions are beyond horrific and I don't mind being called a snowflake for this because having strong human reactions to the torture of sentient beings, I think, should be normalised. And there is the issue of queue fever and anthrax and right now, sure, the risk might be very low, but we are expecting weather conditions to be drier for longer, which significantly increases this threat. For those who say the risk is no different to what's experienced at the sale yards, you might be right. Whether or not a sale yard in the middle of our city with climate change is a good idea, needs to be discussed. A man in Tichura did contract anthrax after inhaling dust from animals travelling down Darren Gill Road and I don't think any of us would want to see that happen. So most of Australia has been cleared for pasture. It's said that Koala will be extinct by two, by 2050 at this current rate of clearing. So pasture used to be irrigated, but political blunders have meant that it's now largely desert. And we know that less trees means less rain, less rains means more erosion.
Councillor Summer, your time limit has passed. Would you like an extension?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so councillor Summer, you now have three minutes more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're talking about climate change here. Yeah, so Australia is now on the list of global deforestation hotspots and this is the industry that indirectly supports that. Now, I know that there's job creation and an economic flow onto the community, but at what cost? We're a small part, piece of this climate puzzle, but we need to think long-term. I'm not a vegetarian, but I can certainly live without eating meat. But what I can't live without is an ecosystem that supports human life. We need to survive. And is it worth the hot dog or the hamburger? They didn't materialise out of thin air. We killed an animal for it, sometimes brutally. And most meat products end up in landfill when the expiry date arrives. We can transition away from killing vast numbers of animals in order to survive, but only if people in upstream decision-making capabilities take a stand and say no. So yes, I'll get backlash. It's probably political suicide, but I feel like we need to find a way to reconcile the animal product industry with the environment and our changing social expectations. So it's a no from me.
Thank you, councillor Summer, for your comments. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yes, councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It has been a very difficult process, I will say on behalf of the councillors. As mentioned, there are extensive conditions listed in the recommendation, in particular addressing the issues raised from the objectors and we thank them for coming in. The report outlines how the developer has worked through solutions and mitigation measures. This has been a thorough and complex process. This has been a thorough and complex process. This has been a big process before we have got here today. Greater Shepparton is attracting investment, we want that to happen, we want opportunities, we want employment. This is a thirty million dollar investment. However, we have to identify how new development affects people in the community and as we have heard from both sides, we have heard from both sides, the objectors and the supporters of this development. I think council has responded well to all parties. Council staff have been very supportive in providing information or direction to any inquiries and the information sessions, as well as to council laws and particularly to me personally. I have raised concerns with the queue fever virus and whilst the risk is rated as low in the report, I am very pleased to see as a requirement it is to provide added scrutiny by requiring the queue fever risk management procedure and bioscrutiny plan to be peer reviewed by EPA experts prior to the commencement of the operations. The property I felt mostly impacted on in regard to queue fever and other associated impacts from the facility of day-to-day running of this facility is the property of Kevin and Cassandra. I ask you to turn to page sixty-four and sixty-five of the agenda and you will see the actual facility in blue and you will see Cassandra and Kevin's property, which is a very small little box. So you will see the impact on their property. Obviously, others are impacted, but I think this property is significantly impacted because of their location. As I said, you will notice the land of the abattoir's developments is in the blue and the small white square is Kevin and Cassandra's property. They are just outside the required acceptable distance. It is very apparent by the location of their property, the impact and what the impact will be on their home. They purchased this property not that long ago and were not aware of this development. My opinion is that this property should have been acquired and something that I hope will happen in the future for this young family. You cannot immunise children under fifteen years of age against queue fever. All staff will be immunised. Queue fever is carried by dust and as we know, up to three thousand sheep per day will be coming close to their home and into this facility. I strongly support this investment and opportunity to Greater Shepparton's region and most, and most impacts on residents, I feel, have been addressed, but I, I do have very, very strong concerns in regard to that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Oraswari?
Thank you, Madam, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to compliment my fellow councillors who've spoken to the, the motion thus far outlining the fours and against. Ultimately, this motion was very vexing for me in terms of the decision. Very easy decision in the sense that, on one hand, in my first term on council, we had the issue of the Broiler Farm at Murchison, which a number of my fellow councillors were here before we went through it. And I didn't support, I voted against it so that the people of Murchison could have some confidence in their council. But I do realise that at that time, passion overtook sound judgement in that regard. It was on the basis that not in my backyard was the cry and I certainly wouldn't like a Broiler Farm in my backyard and I certainly wouldn't like an abattoir in my backyard. However, as it's been said, there's been a number of assessments, critical assessments that have been done, experts have been involved. And there I say consultants, who are not my favourite people, but they have a place. The planners are of a view that this permit for an abattoir should issue. They believe that strict conditions can adequately manage the negative outcomes, that the affected persons have repeatedly warned us about. But the reality is that even if this application were voted down by a majority of councillors, it would find itself before VCAT, who I'm reasonably confident would grant a, grant a permit with conditions. This pains me to support such an enterprise, but I realise that everything points to it being an allowed activity in the farming zone. Conditions that may be put in place on a permit are only as good as the protections that are put in place with them. And what flows from conditions is enforcement. And I would strongly urge that if this motion is passed, that any conditions are taken seriously by council. Having said that, I believe that all the checks and balances have been put in place to effectively manage the facility, but the proof will be in the implementation. And on a final note, business and job creation should never compromise health and safety of people. But in this case, I believe those critical issues have been examined and deemed acceptable.
Thank you, Councillor Oraswari. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor, councillor Sutton? Four, all right, you would like to speak for the motion? Please carry on.
Um, I agree with everything everybody else has said and I find it hard also to approve this, this, this abattoir, but it meets all the planning requirements and abattoirs are supported in an activity in this agricultural area. So there's nothing really that we can say that, that we can't really support it. The EPA has actually approved their development, as has the Zulaynik experts. And I agree that the outcome won't be popular with the objectors, but as stated before, it meets all requirements and has many conditions on the permit that must be met and even before the operation actually start to begin, start. So I just have to agree.
Thank you, Councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Jovanati?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As per the other councillors who spoke in favour of this particular motion, I think it's inherent upon all of us to say that to the members of the community who live in that vicinity, that we do sympathise with them. But unfortunately, the fact is that this particular project is permitted in a farming zone. And as other councillors have mentioned, the EPA has given their ticket of approval to it. The conditions that have been put on the developers by council and the department are quite onerous. And as Councillor Oraswari mentioned, it's important that the various supervising bodies ensure that these conditions are met to the letter of the law.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think there's anyone else left.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll take a slightly different tack because I think other councillors have covered the, the main thrust of the application and the, the objections and how they've been dealt with. So I thought I might comment in respect of what council's role is in, in this matter. And that role is to administer the Planning and Environment Act. And that act provides a process, provides a process where an application can be made and then be assessed by, initially by council staff. At a certain point, it's publicised, so you can comment from the community. And many of those people in the community have commented, they've objected to the process and those objections have then been assessed individually and collectively and to reach the position where we are now, where a decision is about to be made. That's not necessarily the end of the process. Both the applicant and the objectors have the right following today. They've got a period of time where they can take their situation to VCAT, not just the objectors, but also the applicants. If the applicants have a concern in relation to the conditions that have been applied, they think they're too harsh or they're a bit ominous, they can seek recourse at VCAT to have those conditions changed. So it's always a bit of a challenge at this point, particular point in time, for people who are directly involved, as to whether they really want to open that can of worms or not. It's a legitimate right of both applicants and objectors to where they want to take this from here. The council's role will of course be to make a decision tonight and then deal with the circumstances that arise from there.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hazelman? So Councillor Patterson, would you like to have your right to reply?
Look, I, I was going to, I'm, I won't, I'll, I'll get on that, but I, I was going to talk what Councillor Hazelman just said. The conditions here in a lot of ways have been negotiated and outcome that not happy, but you know, it could be worse. If we were to take it, if I were to take it to VCAT, they could go and apply for less conditions and we'd end up with a worse outcome. So the conditions we've got are very harsh. If we were to go to VCAT, which would mean this council not to back tonight, they could go to, go to VCAT and those conditions could be granted a lot less leniently than they are in this document. So I, I think the best thing we can do is pass it.
Thank you very much. We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against?
Division, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Those in favour? Councillor Sutton, Councillor Patterson, Councillor Hazelman, Councillor Abdullah, Councillor Adam, Councillor Jovanati, Councillor O'Keefe and Councillor Oraswari. In favour? And those against? Councillor Sutter. Motion carried. We will now go to page number eighty-one. We have item number eleven point five, adoption of the Greater Shepparton Heritage Strategy two thousand and nineteen. There's a recommendation on page eighty-two. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Sutter?
Happy to.
Thank you.
Do the recommendation, that's motion, that's printed on page eighty-two. Yeah, great.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'd be a second then, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. Councillor Sutter, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, just briefly. We've done so much work on this. Our staff are incredibly passionate about heritage. They, they understand that there's sometimes some animosity in the community when heritage gets brought up because there might be restrictions on their house or property. The idea is not to be restrictive in our approach, the idea is to enhance what's already there. Greater Shepparton has lost a lot of its heritage and we really, we haven't had the opportunity to appreciate what heritage we have because it's never been a priority before. But our staff prioritise heritage at the same level as they do flood levees and fire levees, which I think is incredibly inspiring. And they have a vision for Greater Shepparton that is easily embraced when you see the big picture. So there's always winners and losers, but again, this isn't actually talking about the details of who does win and who does lose. Not that there's necessarily going to be any losers, this is just the strategy. So in an ideal world, this is how we'd like to roll out our heritage approach. And obviously, moving forward, there's going to be ebbs and troughs and changes and things we may or may not have anticipated. But I think the strategy is terrific. I encourage everybody to have a read at home, try and get excited about what we're trying to do and achieve as a municipality. And we're always open to suggestions moving forward.
Thank you, Councillor Sutter. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Oraswari?
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor. Heritage strategy, every council's an absolute plethora of strategies, some good, some not so good. The heritage strategy for me is one of my least favourite. Sure, my fellow councillors have heard me bang on repeatedly about a man's home is his castle. And this is one of those strategies that seeks to usurp that principle under the guise that we need to protect our heritage. It seeks to restrict and allow us to do only the things to our house if it accords with the requirements of the strategy if we have a heritage listed property. Now, heritage as a broad principle is capable of being all things to all people and ultimately its aim, which I agree with, is to preserve and protect those building sites, anything else which we consider to be heritage and preserve our history. And may I say it, heritage, no pun intended, is a very important part of our existence. But this strategy, and I'm really speaking against it on the basis of principle, is because in my time in council, I've seen two examples where people with heritage property, one property which had heritage listing on it was restricted by council in being able to sell the property because it required some requirements which to my way of thinking were laughable. The other example is a more recent, where effectively a property which is in a heritage precinct but is not heritage and the people there wanted to do a worthwhile renovation, but were refused because the renovation was being done which didn't fit the heritage precinct. So for mine, it seems to be a complete damned if you are and damned if you don't in regard to the way the heritage strategy has been formulated. That's my view.
Thank you, Councillor Oraswari. Would a councillor like to move to the motion? Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor O'Keefe, yeah?
I'm speaking to it because this is just the strategy. I mean, council laws will have more input to this strategy early next year. And I certainly support Councillor Oraswari's input to where we are positioned in the community at the moment. There is a lot of concerns in regard to the one-size-fits-all approach, but we have to be mindful, this is the bookend if you like, it's what happens in between and then councillors will have more input in the first quarter of the year next year, is my understanding. So I think, you know, when we look across Greater Shepparton, council has been, you know, accused of losing the post office. We certainly didn't do that. We have no say in that apparently. Council tried to stop that. We certainly get hammered, you know, for, for losing significant heritage and I certainly want to support that. But I think there has to be not a one-size-fits-all, we have to be mindful of what is improvement and what is maintenance. You know, we have to retain a certain amount of heritage and I think we have to look at individual cases to ensure that people within the community, you know, are able to enjoy their home to the capacity that they would like. The incident that Les is talking about, I've been talking to those residents and it's disappointing because those residents that at the moment their house is not heritage listed are wanting to spend a great deal of money to that property to make it look so much better than what it does at the moment. But the restrictions have got to the point where what is, you know, disrespectful to heritage and what is supporting, you know, it's, it's very difficult trying to, you know, maybe work that out. But I think we need to look at tiers of opportunity, you know. Yes, they can't go and build a full-storey apartment on that, on that, on that land. They can't go and, you know, pull it down and lose it completely. But what is the difference between turning something into bigger and better or ruining it and taking it away? There's a big difference and this is where I think we pop this broad gap. I'm not sure what council can do as far as what our, you know, authority is, but I certainly feel for some of the community members at the moment, particularly those that were not aware that their house, and it doesn't have a heritage over, like this particular house we're talking about, but the surrounding amenity has a heritage type of appearance if you like. So some of it is just, yeah, very, very hard to accept in the sense of common sense. So I'm looking forward to having more input as we do in the early part of next year where we can have a bit more important guidance to what our role is and what we can achieve in some perhaps some changes.
Thank you, Councillor O'Keefe. Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? Would a councillor like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to back up the comments that Councillor O'Keefe made, but.
Thank you, Councillor Hazelman.
This, this isn't the end of the process by any means. This is a very broad overarching strategy and to put meat on the bones, if you like, that this will need to move forward through a planning scheme amendment. That planning scheme amendment will be a very public process which will provide opportunities for residents to have their say. It's probably disappointing that in the development of the strategy, there were only six respondents to the public advertisement of the strategy and two of those were not relevant to the actual strategy itself. So hopefully, when this goes out to the public gaze, we get a far better response and the issues that have been raised by Councillor Oraswari, the individual members of the community that might feel they could be impacted, have the direct opportunity to influence what that planning scheme amendment looks like. I would like to wager that the planning scheme amendment won't be the end of the process, it'll end up at Panels Victoria and it'll be quite a lengthy process before we get some resolution of this.
Thank you, Councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Here's Councillor Jovanati?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As councillor.
As councillor Hazelman and councillor O'Keefe mentioned, this is, I suppose, the early stages of a quite lengthy process, so therefore I will be supporting the recommendation because what we are receiving is the Greater Shepparton Heritage Draft Report. But as my fellow councillors know, I'm not a big fan of heritage because of the fact that it doesn't pinge on the owners' rights of their own homes. I'm not against heritage per se, especially those properties that relate to government or public buildings and also people who's owned private homes who are happy to be involved in heritage programming. I had intended to add a third point to the recommendation on the draft, Greater Shepparton Heritage Strategy two thousand and nineteen. The third point was going to give private owners of properties the option to opt out of any heritage plans or overlays, as I strongly believe the council should not dictate to homeowners what they can do with their own properties when they are listed as heritage. If I had moved item point three, it would have been deemed as ultra vires because it contradicted state legislation, so we were unable to do that, which is a considerable shame. Therefore, obviously, my motion didn't proceed. When speaking about this earlier, one councillor mentioned to me, the label, this is a form of communism now. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't necessarily make any comment towards that, but it may not be far from the truth. Whatever happened, as councillor Oriswari said earlier, whatever happened to the adage that the man's home is his castle, definitely not if you're under a heritage listing. I'll speak further on this issue when the heritage plan amendment is before us next year and hopefully, with the support of other councils, we may be able to achieve some significant outcomes.
Thank you councillor Jovanati. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer, would you like to use your right of reply?
Yes, I'd like to thank the councillors for their input.
Madam mayor, I'd like to reserve my right to speak.
Oh.
All right. Okay.
I must stay cancelled.
All right. Sorry, we'll ask councillor Adam to carry...
No, I do.
Thank you for reminding us.
As councillor Hazelman pointed out, this is the first step and I think we all understand that. Having said that, I totally agree with many points that councillor Jovanati and councillor Oriswari said. Heritage, people tonight have referenced the post office and some of the older buildings that we lost. It seems to me we're being punished for the sins of the past to a degree. If someone owns a house and it's been in the family for thirty or forty years and it's not under any heritage overlay, it can be nominated to be under an overlay and yes, there's a process involved, but ultimately, that place could be put under a heritage overlay without the real consent of the owner. Now, I'm just not happy with that particular process, the way it happens. I mean, if the heritage committees or the heritage organisations of the state and the state government are really that concerned, they may consider purchasing those properties, then reselling them to people who actually are committed to the heritage cause. I'm not saying that's the solution, but that's something that can be considered. But I doubt we'll perpetuate this further as this come before council in the future. Having said that, would you support this particular motion tonight?
Thank you councillor Adam. Councillor Summer, would you now like to use your right of reply?
Thank you, madam mayor. It's been very interesting listening to people's theories. It's nice to have a diversity of debate. Again, this is just the strategy. I think councillor O'Keefe had a great analogy there, it's the bookend and all the things, all the important details can be worked out in between. I don't think voting against the strategy is going to do, going to add any value other than throw the baby out with the bathwater really. No doubt after listening to everybody, there's a few heritage naysayers and I'm certain that they will ensure that it's a fair process, especially leading up to the planning scheme amendment process. And hopefully, we can iron out any creases. I don't consider heritage overlays to be a form of communism. I would call it a form of art perhaps, but certainly not communism. And as said by one of our senior staff to us today, heritage enriches lives. So it enriches us all. It's not supposed to be an onerous opposition to free will, so.
Thank you councillor Summer. We will now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. All right, page eighty-six. Page eighty-five, we have item number eleven point six, Planning Permit Application, twenty eighteen to three twenty for a camping and caravan park at two fifteen Mitchell Road, Kayala.
Madam mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation, but starts on page eighty-six and finishes somewhere in the...
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Page eighty-six to ninety-eight.
There you go. Do you want me to read it out, madam mayor?
No, thank you.
Okay. No, I'll write that down.
All right.
In black and white.
Thank you councillor Adam for moving this motion. Do I have a second? Councillor Oriswari?
Sorry. Do you should put...
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I think there's been a lot of talk about this particular recommendation for many years actually. It's been a long, slow process, but here we are tonight where the recommendation to grant permit with copious amounts of conditions. Having said that, I think this is a fantastic project that really fills a need for Greater Shepparton. As we all know, council spent millions of dollars over many years with our sports precinct and attracting different events and sporting events especially to Greater Shepparton and cultural events. And the common complaint is there's not enough accommodation. That was true two, three years ago and I think even more true here today. Only yesterday, I was actually, I met people coming from Sydney by chance who could not find a combination in Greater Shepparton. I did end up finding something, but there's a, obviously there's different sporting events on. So this really is needed. I think the fact that it's taken so long to get to this point with all these conditions, there's no doubt the council have actually considered it and tried to make it as, I suppose, as good a project as possible from our point of view. I'm just looking forward to this actually commencing and providing accommodation, not just accommodation, but actually an attraction in itself for tourism, for family visitors, for all types of visitors to Greater Shepparton. I think it's fantastic and I hope it gets going sooner rather than later.
Thank you councillor Adam. Councillor Oriswari, would you like to move, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to echo the commentary by councillor Adam. I understand that the other thing is that flows from this is, I believe it's a thirty-one million dollar investment capital. It will attract with it a fair range of jobs, both in the construction and acquisition phase. And I too am looking forward to seeing how this development pans out. I think it would be very good for Greater Shepparton and I understand that they're hoping to attract focus on China and things of that nature. And we already know how interested they are in our agricultural side of things, our produce, our fruit and all those sorts of things. And I think this will be an addendum to that particular aspect of things. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Oriswari. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm happy to support this development as it ticks many boxes for Greater Shepparton. It will provide a much-needed tourism accommodation with cabins and caravan sites. It will also include a restaurant, an Aboriginal cultural centre and a craft centre. It have Aboriginal guided tours and the land that will be used, that will be over from this will be used for agriculture, so it will be still having an agricultural focus as well. The stays will be restricted to thirty days and the independent expert reports found the proposal to be acceptable use of this land if VCAT's original concerns have been addressed in the new plans. But many conditions have been placed on this permit, which the applicant is happy to proceed with, and this will ensure the outcome to be positive for all those involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Jovanati?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just echoing what my fellow councillors have said tonight, this is, this has been a significant project right from my first initial days on council. This application has been going for. And I think the big thing is, as other councillors have mentioned, is that it's going to boost our accommodation numbers. And I just happened to have a quick look at the numbers that we're going to be looking at. In total, with the accommodation pods that have been suggested, it'll be three hundred and fifty and that's over four different stages, as well as seventy-five caravan sites. Added to this, we're going to be utilizing Aboriginal employment for the construction of the pods, which is a boon in itself. And I think that if we can get the Chinese market out here, looking at this particular project, it's not only going to benefit this particular project, but it's going to benefit Greater Shepparton as a whole. And I think that it will be a significant boon for our municipality.
Thank you. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes councillor O'Keefe?
Just a few comments. Perseverance has played a big part in this development. It's been ongoing for quite some time. I must congratulate the developer in working with council. I mean, we can all see the recommendations which are quite significant within the agenda. And I think, you know, if you're willing to persevere and stick within the guidelines, these opportunities will happen if it's obviously the right fit. So congratulations. I think it's important to think that, as I say, perseverance, not give up, work together and hopefully come out with a positive outcome and hopefully that's exactly what is happening here.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
Yes, madam mayor.
Councillor Hazelman?
I think as other councillors have noted, that some of the planning conditions are quite onerous. And before any development can occur, there's a range of plans that have to be provided by the developer and submitted to council. I think if I look in the very first point, point one, there's some ten dot points outlining specific plans that have to be provided. There's a range of others throughout the conditions, Stormwater Grani, civil construction plans. So this is very much a very small step moving forward. There's a significant amount of work that is going to need to be undertaken before any development actually starts.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
It's incredibly exciting. Can't wait to go there and check it out. I think the theme is incredible, the Aboriginal cultural heritage on display. We have the largest Indigenous population outside of Melbourne and that's something to be very proud of. And I also enjoy that they've got this unconventional twist of land use that is unable to be used for accommodation. That's where they're going to conduct these tours down Sevens Creek. So I have been waiting with bated breath for this to get through and whether it's the first step or a small step, I'm just glad it's a step. So the sooner we can get this as part of our municipality, the better everyone is.
Thank you councillor Summer. So would any councillor like to speak for the motion? All right. So we will now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Next is item eleven point seven, New Business Grant Guidelines, page one hundred and twelve. There's a recommendation. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move that the council noted that a review has been conducted of the new business grant guidelines and endorse the proposed changes within the new business grant guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson? Thank you. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. The grants that we've been offering has been of benefit. We know we've attracted some great new business into Greater Shepparton area. Some of the adjusted guidelines in regard to, obviously, one, a dollar for dollar funding is really important as well, that the actual applicant does put in a dollar for dollar. That funding is also available to support investment in property, infrastructure improvements that are directly linked to the establishment of the new business. It's very important to know where that money's going to go. Some of the changes made to the guidelines include some of the following. Grant applications are limited to the CBD precinct boundary as per the CBD Strategy two thousand and eight and the maps attached, or within main streets of small towns for commercial purposes within Greater Shepparton. I think it's very important, you know, as a growing municipality, as a growing business community, that we attract new business to our region and I think this is doing that. We just need to make sure that we are putting the right message out to who is actually going to qualify for these grants. So I'm really pleased to say there's been a few adjustments, but I think it's important that we try to attract new business. We can support new business, but the funding has to be very specific, which is listed here tonight on the agenda.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. This is basically a living, growing document, I believe. It's only been, this policy's only been around for a couple of years. We weren't sure as councillors, I wasn't sure as a councillor, whether I supported after the last round of funding. But it's had a great history, like about ten thousand dollars, it was a part of a five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar development for Snits. So it's a part of attracting, the whole idea is to attract businesses, give them a little bit of money, bring them in. As I said at the start of it, well, I'm not hundred percent sure we've got it exactly right yet, but there's nothing wrong with running with this and maybe fine tuning it again another year or two. I think we're all under that frame of mind that it's probably the right thing to be doing to growing our town, that we might have to play with a little bit as we go along. So, yeah, I do support it.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Next is item number eleven point eight on page hundred and seventeen, Cusson Park Annual Report and Advisory Committee Appointment Request. There's a recommendation on page one one seven. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Madam mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation on page one one seven that the council receive a note, the annual report from the Cusson Park Advisory Committee and appoint Sarah Clack to this Cusson Park Advisory Committee until the twentieth of February two thousand and one.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you councillor Adam. Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just very, very briefly, madam mayor. Look, this is very procedural in so much as the Cusson Park Advisory Committee have to provide us a copy of their annual report each year, which they have done. I'd also like to welcome Sarah Clack onto the CPAC and hope she enjoys her time on that committee.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, I just kept thinking if former councillor Ryan was here, he's speaking about the dural and the crown and the dural of the crown because it is a very unique spot they've developed over there and it's credit to the community that they've done it. And I can remember, it was just an old, well, I don't say old swamps because swamps are a great thing, but that was a bit of stagnant backwater and they've done a lot of work voluntarily over the years. They have a great committee that looks after it and it's a credit to those people and it's a real asset to the town now, so I congratulate them for it.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. So the next item is eleven point nine on page number hundred and twenty, China and Hong Kong Delegation Report two thousand and nineteen. There's a recommendation on page one twenty-one. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Thank you councillor O'Keefe.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation on page one twenty-one, which there are five points to be noted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Adam. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you very much, madam mayor. I had my second trip to China this year between the first and seventh of September. This year it was a seven day trip compared to eleven last year, so I'm much busier...
This year, it was a seven-day trip compared to 11 last year, so a much busier trip. Look, this is the opportunity that Greater Shepparton gets to put ourselves out on the world stage. I'm very, it's very important that we don't sit in our own corner of the world, that we do put ourselves out there, and we put a bright light on our region. And that's exactly what happens when we head over to China and to Hong Kong. So a very busy delegation, myself, we had Peter Harriet CEO with us on this trip, Anthony Kalachi, I must congratulate his hard work, and also Tim Nethersole, a local grower and exporter from Geoffrey Thompson Fruit Packing Co. And very valuable to have Tim with us as well. It's a great opportunity to really put on the table exactly what Greater Shepparton is, what we have to offer. And when we meet with organizations like Business Victoria, we met in Shanghai with Business Victoria, Austrade, you know, we really talk about opportunities, you know, not only for export, but also what perhaps could come our way. We met up with Gintan, our friendship city as well, which is a very important relationship in regard to education opportunities. Again, really sharing what Greater Shepparton is, because often people don't know who we are. So we had the opportunity to run the national news over there, 350,000 people in Gintan, actually heard a little bit about Greater Shepparton, which is great to have that bright light now put right on us. From China, we went on to the Asia Fruit Logistics Expo. That was an exciting few days, very, very busy once again. We had 10-hour days there. But having Tim, having the local grower, was so important. We can see that I'll obviously talk the talk when it comes to fruit. But having council have our own stand, there was extremely valuable. We had a point of contact. So, you know, it was a matter of people coming over, us, you know, telling them about who we are, where we are, the incredible offerings that we have, and then lining them up with growers. You know, we had over 10, I think it was, local growers that, you know, were very happy to have us there and give them support. So it's very valuable, and it's a very busy time, but a great opportunity to put ourselves in, out in the world market. We've had some great things come back from this trip. I certainly encourage a trip, and Mayor, Councillor Gill, I'm sure you'll get to have this incredible opportunity to really showcase and be excited about our region. So yeah, fantastic trip, certainly supported again. I know the growers, we've had some great letters come back in regard to their success from this year's trip.
Thank you very much, Councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd like to speak to it, Madam Mayor, but I really can't add to that. But I'll just echo councillor O'Keefe's comments there. I was lucky enough to go on the first inaugural trip, and it's obviously been refined since then, and it's a lot more productive, I would suspect. I think it'll just get stronger and stronger, and we should be sticking with this course of action for the rest of the future.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we will now go for the vote. All in favour? Or those in favour, sorry? Councillor Adam? Thank you. Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. All right, so next is item number 11.10 on page number 126. We have a recommendation. Advocacy Document for State and Federal Government. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor O'Keefe, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that the council does the two advocacy documents developed in partnership with many industry and community groups to articulate the priorities of the Greater Shepparton community, changing the face of regional Australia and changing the face of regional Victoria.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Happy to second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Jovanati. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think we have Sam Brule in the gallery tonight for the Committee for Greater Shepparton, a strong partner with this document. We had a lot of community leaders participate in this document. On the 23rd of October, a delegation went to Canberra, presented almost a draft document, if you like. It was a little bit rushed to get it to the Prime Minister, but a very, very important advocacy tool for our community. So this is our priority, some of our asks of government. It's great to have the collaboration of others with this document, because so many heads coming together for our region bring great things to the community. We have a federal, we have a state document, and within that document has costings and priorities, hospital, education, rail, all the things that are important. One of the things that I'm very excited to see in this document for the first time is homelessness, which is a great opportunity that we can now start, you know, really showing the country the severe statistics we have around homelessness. It does say in the document, leaving no one behind, which is a great wording in regard to homelessness. So I'm very, very passionate to see what we can, you know, improve in that space. But there's so many things within this document. It's talking about the change of the face of regional Australia, regional Victoria. We've got a lot of projects in there that are already pending. Some of them are on the go, some of them are not. So we're very excited to think, what does the next 12 months, three years, five years hold for Greater Shepparton? And I'd like to thank Committee for Greater Shepparton, and also the other people that were involved in these documents. A lot of work went in. I'd also like to thank Rob Priestley, who actually named this document, creating the new face of regional Australia. There was a few bits that put our heads together for that. Rob did a great job. I think that says a lot about who we are and what we are, creating a new face of regional Australia. A lot happening across Greater Shepparton, exciting times ahead, but a lot of work still to be done. We're looking forward to the next 12 months and beyond to seeing, you know, what does our region look like.
Thank you, Councillor O'Keefe.
Madam Mayor, before we go on, I might just note, thank councillor O'Keefe for acknowledging Rob Priestley for coming up with the heading, and note that the actual recommendation should read, creating the new face of regional Australia, and creating the new face of regional Victoria. We've got a slight change there, so if...
The title of the document is changed?
Yes, if councillor O'Keefe would like to change your motion to reflect the correct one. Whilst I'm here, if I could just also acknowledge the partnerships that have been throughout this document with the Catchment Management Authority, La Trobe University, Melbourne University, the Hospital, Lighthouse, Basketball, River Connect, Rambalora, Committee Four, and many others. It's been a great combined team effort. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
If you like, yes.
Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to, to, to say what your motion is with the amended title of the document that Mr Peter Harriet has just pointed out?
Sure. I'd like to recommend that the council does the two advocacy documents developed in partnership with many industries and community groups to articulate the priorities of the Greater Shepparton community, being creating the new face of regional Australia. And the other one is creating the new face of regional Victoria. Those are the two documents.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Briefly, I think it's great that we've had the support and involvement of the Committee for Greater Shepparton. They have had considerable input into this, as what Mr Harriet indicated earlier, as have a number of other groups, both community groups and various committees. We as councillors are often asked by politicians when they come to speak to us, what are our asks of government, particularly around election time? And if we can now produce these documents to the politicians, it gives them a very good starting point as to what monies that we will require from whatever government is in power. So I think it's an excellent initiative, and the projects that are included, I won't read them all because they are significant, are very, will be very worthy to Shepparton, and we hope to get all of them up and running in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you very much, councillor Jovanati. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
It's very important that we are on the front foot when we do ask government for our priorities. It's very competitive out there. We are a safe seat, so the more we jump up and down and say, this is what we need, and this is why, the better. It certainly spells out the reasoning behind what, how this is going to enrich our city. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll be able to deliver on some of those in conjunction with higher levels of government. That's it.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
I'd just like to congratulate everyone involved. We haven't, from a councillor's perspective, we haven't said, we're going to go and do this. We've included, and we've been included by other groups that have gone up there. It's the united front, and we're tackling them on. We're showing these pollies exactly what we all want. We're knocking on their front door, we've got the documents to back it up. We're all saying the same thing, all the organizations are saying the same thing. It's very, very important, whenever you go lobbying, you have a united voice, and that's what we have, and this document declares that. And it's a credit to the organizations that have worked together on this.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Right, on page 129. Sorry, we have item 12, Reports from Councillors. Nil received. Item number 13, Reports from Special and Advisory Committees. Nil received. Item number 14, Notice of Motion Amendment or Session. 14.1, Notice of Motion. Councillor Summer, do you have a notice of motion here?
Yes, thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the notice of motion as printed on page 29, along with the permit conditions from page 129 to 131.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This should be a relatively straightforward matter. Councillors voted down a recommendation not to award a two-lot subdivision, and now we have the opportunity to pass the application. Unfortunately, the process has been convoluted somewhat by a recent objector who yesterday sent us pictures of posters that imply the land will be used as an alcohol and drug rehabilitation centre. Now, this is news to me too, but I'd like to remind councillors, the notice of motion before us only deals with the subdivision, not future use. A rehabilitation facility would need to come before council for a formal resolution at a future date, and today is not that day. And for all we know, the posters could have been put there by a third party hoping to sway today's vote. But in any case, I'm going to summarize the same points we made at the last previous meeting and hope common sense prevails. There's nothing in the application to suggest the land will not be used for agricultural purposes, because we're going off what we know, not speculation. Despite being in a regular shape, the surface area of 40 hectares is allowable, and the proposed pivot irrigation system is clearly supportive of agricultural development. Right, now the land is vacant, subdivision will enable a buyer to use and develop the land as it was intended. I don't believe subdivision of this particular piece of land will encourage further fragmentation, as every application must be taken on its merits. I do believe it's of sufficient size to be of benefit for agricultural production, and it's really out of the scope of council to decide commercial viability. If it's not viable, there'll be no buyer, and if there's no buyer, the land remains the same size, remains the same shape, and remains unused anyway. So subdivision is a win-win. The recent objector also took issue with us for not considering consolidation of rural lots. That's not required during every rural planning application, and consolidation in this location doesn't make much sense when you consider potential rezoning for future growth. So decision guidelines for the planning scheme are exactly that, they're guidelines. The sole issue that I can see is that the land is in a regular shape, but I don't think it constitutes grounds for refusal when taken in its entirety. There's benefits there in subdivision. But either way, either way, however we vote, the application will probably end up at BCAT, and I'll watch for the result with keen interest.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I tend to agree with councillor Summer, which doesn't happen all that often. To me, it does fit the 40 hectares, which is in our planning requirements. I'm not supporting it for anything else apart from the fact it does, does fit that. I'm not supporting any development on it, I'm not supporting anything else. If we're going to get to the stage where we're telling farmers what they can grow, what they can rear, what they, the shape of their 40 acres, 40 hectares has got to be, we've lost the plot. That planning scheme allows for 40 hectares of agricultural land to be used the way that he wants to for an agricultural outcome, right? And if he's wanting to split that into 10-acre blocks, I'll be the first putting my hand up and saying, no, I don't support this at all. That's not what it's about. I strictly would not allow, I'm not support, excuse me, not support that. But under our current legislation, 40 hectares is a legitimate agricultural piece of land, and we're not to be telling him that he can have six goats, four cows, and we've got to put a centre pivot on there, right? That's not our job, right? If he tries to break it down into a smaller lot, that's when I wouldn't be supporting it at all.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Jovanati?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I accept what councillors Summer and Patterson have said, but where I come from, a small farmer, somewhere between 500,000 hectares, so 40 hectares, I don't believe personally is enough to make a reasonable living from. But neither, whether that's, happens around here or not, I'm not sure. But if we look at our own planning scheme objectives for rural areas, it states that to limit further fragmentation of rural land by subdivision. It states to ensure that lots resulting from subdivision are of sufficient size to be of benefit to agricultural production. It states to provide for the consolidation of rural lots. It states to prevent small lot subdivision to meet personal and financial circumstances, or to create lots for rural lifestyle, and to prevent the creation of irregular-shaped lots. If you vote in favour of this, you're just about to blow all of those objectives out the window. I think we've got to go back to what our own planning scheme recommends. If we go outside of that, we leave ourselves open.
Thank you, councillor Jovanati. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Adam?
Taking on board what councillor Patterson and councillor Summer have said, I totally agree. In respect of size of the block, well, the rural land use strategy clearly talks about 40 hectares, 60 with a dwelling. So councillor Jovanati just quoted out some of the points of our, I don't know where that came from actually, but the rural land use strategy clearly says 40 hectares, so that meets that requirement. As in respect to whether the owner can then further subdivide those blocks, well, there's a one, section 173 agreement that's part of this recommendation, which clearly states lots created may not be further subdivided, other than to create a lot that meets a minimum lot size for subdivision of the zone. So no doubt if the zoning changes in the future of that particular area, then he'll be subject, or shall be subject to those particular, yes, conditions. So I can't see the issue with this at all, so fully support it.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hisman?
Thank you. This council employs many professionally qualified people in the health sector, in childcare, and engineers. Wow, engineers today, Mr CEO. And in this case, our town planners. And rarely do councillors ignore their professional advice, and this is one of those occasions. And the track record for both is somewhat telling. Our town planners are batting at Radmaness standards at BCAT, and in recent times, councillors at Nordstrom too. The infamous Chukpho, there's 90,000 reasons to remember that one, and more recent times, the cottage. And the challenge is, the town planner's September report recommending refusal is going to be the first piece of evidence presented by the objectors. And everyone in the room at BCAT is going to know that our case, if this motion is successful, is not the council planner's professional opinion. This motion simply flips the position put forward in the September report, and no doubt that will be highlighted, which is the challenge for any councillor-initiated planning decisions. The use of this land, or the suggested or proposed use of this land has changed over time, and this current suggestion is one for agriculture. What we're seeing here is, we've got a professional objective assessment being ignored and replaced by a subjective councillor assessment.
Thank you, councillor Hisman. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Okay. Councillor Summer, would you like to use your right of reply?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I respect everybody's opinion here, and I take note that councillor Jovanetti is used to quite large farms in order to create some commercial resilience and actual living. We're only talking about an eighty hectare site though, that's going to be split, so I'm not sure if that applies here, because we have to take it in context. And yes, the zoning is different to the surrounding zones, but it is also... On the perimeter, there's a lot of smaller lots already, and as I said before, it's probably going to be rezoned, maybe within the next five to ten years anyway, as we grow in that area. Now, it is rare that we go against a planner's decision, but it does happen. We are not voted into council just to maintain the status quo and nod our heads at everything that the organisation give us. We're here to represent the ratepayers, and the ratepayers really don't give two figs about who made the decision, only that the decision is fair. And in this case, we're splitting farms, not splitting hairs. The world will not fall into a big mess if we allow this small subdivision in an area where I find it appropriate. And yes, it might be subjective, but it's also backed up by some planning conditions, and backed up by some theory, and backed up by the fact that there were no objections from any other body involved in this decision. So I implore you just to streamline this through, please.
Thank you, councillor Sumner. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against? One, two, three. Motion carried. Thank you. Right, on page one hundred and thirty-two, item fourteen point two, councillor Fern Sumner, you have given a notice?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the notice of motion as printed on one hundred and thirty-two with one change. The first word, consider, I'd like to make that implement, so if you like...
So, excuse me, councillor Sumner, you have moved this notice of motion, and you can't amend this motion?
Oh, that's all right, that's all right. Makes no difference in the ultimate scheme of things.
So you're happy with the motion in its present form?
It was recommended to me by another councillor that I change it, but I'm more than comfortable with the word consider, so it's fine.
Okay. Another councillor can amend if you like, but...
It's really...
All right?
By all means.
So do we have a second? Councillor O'Keeffe, thank you. Councillor Sumner, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Waste management has been on the agenda for a long time, and there really hasn't been a lot of movement in regards to access to the transfer station. This is simply a goodwill incentive to encourage first visits to the transfer station, because research suggests that people who go once are far more likely to go again throughout the year. Everyone deserves a clean house, and it is our responsibility as a council to facilitate that. Our core values, popularly described, are roads, roads, rates, and rubbish, so it is important. The current use-of-pays waste management system is inequitable, as those less able to pay do not access the service for many reasons. Unknown cost is a large barrier. People don't know if they'll be charged twenty dollars or two hundred dollars, so they simply just don't go. We can reasonably expect those who take up this option to be educated when they're there on how to sort the rubbish, to make it cheaper and easier for them in the future. And it's also an opportunity to educate people about the quite large, I don't even say extortionate fees passed down to us by the EPA. It is expensive, but a lot of that goes straight back to state government. Rubbish dumping in Greater Shepparton is an ongoing problem. It's impossible to quantify the whole economic impact of dumping, but financially, it costs us about two hundred thousand to clean up areas that we can access, not including the river full of wildlife. There's also environmental threats to wildlife and social impacts of reduced amenity and safety hazards in backyards and streets and our natural environment. So this initiative will redirect waste safely to the transfer station over January and hopefully continue through the year. Rubbish dumping, we picked January because it increases in January and Feb after the festive season. There's so many unwanted gifts, cardboard packaging, bottles. Many of these are free to drop off to the transfer station anyway, or can be sold at the second-hand shop. So council will benefit financially in on-selling good quality items. Rubbish dumping also increases during this time due to increased stress over the festive season. Our staff has told me that it is an ugly reality, but relationships can break down and people move house over this period, leaving a lot of residual waste behind, or they dump their things that they don't need. This initiative gives households the opportunity to clear up what could be considered unofficial landfills in their backyard. It does impact your quality of life when you're surrounded by rubbish and feel quite powerless to get rid of it. We did have an initiative in our original municipal waste management strategy for many years. It just sat there, and that included complimentary drop-offs at the transfer station, but it was never actioned. And that demonstrates an unfortunate lack of action by the organisation in dealing with the problem of rubbish dumping. Some funding will be required, but it will be made up in increased revenue...
Councillor Sumner, you have exceeded your time limit. Would you like an extension?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if possible.
Is everyone okay with that? All right, so you have three more minutes?
Thanks. Yeah, some funding will be required. We need a bell or something.
You're only talking rubbish anyway.
Yeah. Whatever we lose in revenue by promoting this or getting staff together to educate around waste disposal, the funds will be made up in increased revenue once people return. Visitation numbers should increase, and if not, then it hasn't achieved its objective, and it won't be initiated into the strategy, but right now it's a trial. Operationally, complimentary tip days are more easily staffed than offering tickets throughout the year, and we may even be able to hire casual staff on an ongoing basis if this does end up a more frequent initiative. So finally, through councillors well-resourced as us, and this is a public meeting, it will look awfully scrudish to knock this back before Christmas. The people keep telling us they want better waste services. Hard waste and tip tickets were mentioned multiple times in our recent customer satisfaction survey. So it was a small initiative in lieu of a hard rubbish collection. I'm asking you to please support this trial. It could just be two days in January, it's not huge, and give the people what they really asked for, because that's our job.
Thank you, councillor Sumner. Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And look, you know, two days in January, people are often on holidays. If it's going to actually activate some cleaning-up activity, I think that's great. There is a bit of talk behind the scenes about some of the service clubs maybe getting on board with this, which would be fantastic. I think, you know, it's a small token, and I think it's something that, as I said, if it activates, people do, you know, maybe start having a little clean-up, pack up some of their rubbish or whatever they need to do to tidy their place, help their neighbour. Two days, I'm happy for that trial. I think, you know, people are often on holidays. I often find I'm cleaning up the house around January after Christmas. So I support this. I think we're not doing a lot in this space in the community at the moment. I think we should be, and we need to maybe come back and have another look at our waste strategy at some point in time. So yes, I support it. Merry Christmas.
Madam Mayor, a point of order, a point of clarification, please. If this motion did get up today, considering a junkyard-junkyard January trial, would that actually mean that this would be implemented? Maybe Mr. Harrow can answer that question.
So this is point of clarification?
Yes, to clarify what the actual motion would activate.
Thank you, councillor Adam. I'm sure if we have further conversations with the move of the motion, the second of the motion, we'll fully understand what it's about and be able to implement it in time.
That wording is sufficient to act upon if successful.
Following further conversation with the councillors, I'm sure we'll be able to act upon it.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, thank you.
That's as clear as I can be.
So, thank you, councillor O'Keeffe. So would any councillor like to speak against the motion?
Madam... Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you go.
Councillor Jovanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll only be brief. Look, I don't disagree with some of the issues that councillor Sumner raised, and I think that at another point in time it may be valid. But the cost of rubbish removal around the municipality, we've been told at a briefing session, the cost counts around about a hundred thousand dollars a year to pick up from the areas that we're required to pick up from. If this tip day trial was implemented, I'm not sure that the target market that councillor Sumner is looking to would actually support that concept. What we were told was that it's cheaper to pick up the rubbish around the town area than what it is to have hard rubbish collection. It's a little bit vague for me, that's what I would like to say, and I probably won't support it, although I do take some of the points that she raises being valid.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor?
Against the motion?
Yes, against. Sorry, councillor Jovanetti, you have spoken against the motion? So we'll now go to for the motion. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Fern and with Kim. I think it's a really nice initiative for us to do for January. It's only for one or two days, so there's not going to be that great an expense there. It's not like it's for six months or something. So I just think it's a really good idea. It might just bring cardboard and paper or whatever, and so that's not going to really... That's not going to cost us anything. So I just think, yes, we should be doing it. Thank you.
Could I have a point of order first, please? I'm hearing two days and it's saying January. What are we talking about here?
Is it point of clarification?
Yes.
You are asking for a clarification?
Yes, please.
Okay, I would first... All right, I'll just check. If that's a clarification, we need to let councillor Sutton finish what she was saying. Councillor Sutton, have you finished your comment?
Thank you.
Have you?
Yes.
Okay, good. So your clarification is around... Your question is around...
I've heard people say two days. It's here, it says January. What are we doing?
So it's the month of January?
It's just tip days, doesn't say the number.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
You may.
That's why I had the word consider. It was deliberately broad so that we could work that, all the detail out later. This is simply the idea of offering one, two, three, maybe every day, who knows? All through January, we may only have two days, and that's fine too. But it's the gesture that's important and not necessarily the detail, because that's exactly why I put the word consider in there.
All right, thank you for your clarification. Is that clear, councillor Patterson?
Against the motion?
You want to speak against the motion?
Yes, please. My major concern is, and I do have some sympathy for the idea, right? I'm not saying it should never happen. But to me, my personal experience is, if I've got too much rubbish to go in my bin, I put it beside it and I put it in next week. So, you know, I'm not expecting my neighbour to pay for me to go to the tip by upping his rates, because someone's got to pay for this. It's not just going to fall out of the sky. Major concern is in January, most... Not most, because my family might be different to most, but a lot of families have a lot of glassware rooted to that where it comes from, wrapping paper, cardboard boxes from presents, et cetera, which should go and recycle. They won't. You're not going to carry it out there. If it goes out there in a plastic bag, it goes in the rubbish. It then goes out to our landfill. Not only do we've got to pay to carry it out there and pay for the landfill, which has cost us something like ten or twelve million dollars in the last few years, we've then got to have a... We're lucky enough, we've got to pay the EPA thirty-two dollars per cubic metre, because we're putting stuff in landfill. So there's a lot... This is a lot more involved than just meets the eye. If we could say, oh, great, all ratepayers, a couple of free days at the tip, terrific. But there's a lot more ramifications than doing what we're doing. And, you know, I do have some sympathy for the concept, and, you know, probably we're maybe looking at it a bit more. But just to do it in some days of January, it could cost us an absolute fortune.
Thank you.
Again, and it's a person that's doing the right thing, is paying for his neighbour that's not doing the right thing.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Oraswari?
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor. For mine, I'd like to know the ways and how we can make this happen, not the ways of why we shouldn't make it happen. The... For me, anybody that's blind-freddy that drives around the city of Greater Shepparton sees the amount of rubbish around the place. This is just a very small part of a bigger conversation which needs to be happened. And I know that councillor Hazeman is prowling around, and he'll have his right of reply in relation to the waste strategy and all those things. Think big picture. For many years, as a long-term resident of Greater Shepparton, I've been living here for thirty-one years, and I've often said, in order for people who live in this community to like their community, the community must be clean, must be well-maintained. And from my perspective, that's not happening to a necessary standard. That's a side issue, but what I'm saying is that this is a very small conversation in a big picture. And I support the notice of motion that councillor Sumner has put up. Everybody bangs on about cost. It does cost. But cost versus outcome versus reward is a big thing. And I think you've got to look at the fact that what we're doing is we're not going to be breaking the bank. We're going to be... It's a measure of this community asking us to do something like that. And nobody sitting around here as councillors can say that this hasn't been raised before. It's a bit like parking. We've done something proactive about parking. I think it's time we did something proactive about the question of these sorts of tip accesses.
Thank you, councillor Oraswari. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. And councillor Oraswari is right. I am going to talk about the waste management strategy, which was commenced about this time last year and released or adopted in draft format and released to the public comment. Very few of those comments that came back from the community referred to tip vouchers or access to the tip. And what I seem to be hearing here about the cleanup after Christmas, getting rid of recyclables, material that is already free to take to the tip, so I find that a bit of a quandary. A little over six months ago, or under six months ago, the council did adopt its waste management strategy. And this specific issue was addressed in that waste management strategy and rejected. I didn't hear councillors around the table raising these sorts of issues then, saying, oh, we should have a crack at this because, yeah, X, Y, and Z. It makes you wonder, why bother having this strategy in the first place? If it's the first opportunity, we're going to ignore it. The reality is, the materials that we're talking about taking to the tip are recyclable materials that are already free to take to the tip. So what are we actually going to achieve here? That's the challenge. I've also got a challenge with the wording of the motion. The motion doesn't specify how many days, how many frequency. All of... If this gets passed, all it says is that the council will consider. To my mind, that means that at some future point in time, we're going to come back as a group and talk about the scope, the format, and the scale of what it is here. We're not making a decision that we're going to do one day, two days, three days, or all days. We're merely going to consider. What is the point?
Thank you, councillor Hazeman. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? Right, councillor Sumner, would you like to have your right of reply?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a heap of notes here, so I hope it all makes sense. I'll start out by the comment that this may not reach the demographic that we intend. I think that's quite a snobbish comment. I think everybody should have the opportunity to have a clean house and start the year with a clean mindset and move forward.
with a clean mindset and move forward. And I think they're underestimating just how much rubbish can impact on quality of life. The fact that it's cheaper, that it's cheaper to pick up the rubbish, I really do take issue with that. It's completely ignoring the triple bottom line of social, environmental and financial, and we're not even able to access a lot of the rubbish that is dumped. So that bottom line on the financial dot point would be higher. The, we're not talking about a hard rubbish collection, I'm talking about maybe a few days. All of that can be worked out in-house operationally and come back to us for a decision on what they deem appropriate. I am not a worker at the transfer station, I don't know the conditions, but I do know that these trials have been rolled out before successfully. And as far as cost goes, and I know this is a low blow, but I mean, everyone in this room put their hand up for a $50 million art gallery, so we're talking about a couple of days in January here. And this thing about...
It was low.
It was low, but it's the truth. I mean, you pull out these things when it suits you and then totally ignore other things and other times. And to pick on the wording of the motion is just objection 101. That happens every single time I want to put something up. So the idea that... Anyway, the idea that your neighbour shouldn't have to pay for someone else to drop off the rubbish goes against the very fabric of what a council is supposed to be. We are a bucket of wellbeing, money, building, supporting for everybody. I mean, if we took that approach, you would have truck drivers who refuse to pay for any kind of playground upgrades. You'd have elderly people who don't want to put any money towards early learning. We are all in this community and we are all impacted by rubbish dumping. We have to drive around and look at people who have thrown things out on the streets, and it really does get everybody down. We need to have some pride in this town. And we're the ones who are able to facilitate that. I haven't seen any action in these areas yet. We have got the organic waste, but again, that doesn't really deal with the issue of dropping waste at the tip. The purpose, as was my first point, of initiating this is so that people will actually go to the tip for the first time, because that will encourage future visits.
Councillor Summer, your time has exceeded. Do you want an extension?
No, thanks.
Thank you. So we now go to the vote?
Point of clarification. It could be difficult on your first day, but I don't really understand what happens if this gets passed. What's the process going forward? There is no outcome.
That we will consider, which is generally taken very seriously. This is the same wording I use for the dog park. We now have a dog park, we're looking at doing more dog parks, it's really not, this is ridiculous.
So at some future point, we're going to sit around the table and consider?
Well, yes, that's exactly what we're going to do councillor Hazelman. And if you vote against that, that's on you, considering something.
All right, so my understanding is that consider is, consider basically, it's broad, it's open. And you're basically asking council staff to bring back a report based on this? And when you say consider, it's either, outcome can be either way?
If it was an unclear motion, it wouldn't have been allowed in the agenda.
All right. So are we clear about, so councillor Summer, you are clear and we are on the same page around this, what it means is consider? And consider means asking our council staff to bring back a report based on some of the criteria and then consider back in, consider it in a council meeting or make a decision at that point?
Correct.
All right, so that's, so that vagueness is quite clear now?
Oh, thank you.
All right. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? So councillor Kim O'Keeffe, you are in favour?
Looks like it.
And those against?
Division, please, Madam Mayor.
Do you want a division? Those in favour? Councillor Sutton, councillor Summer, councillor Adam, councillor O'Keeffe, councillor Oraswari. Thank you. Those against? Councillor Patterson, councillor Hazelman, councillor Seema Abdullah, councillor Giovinetti. So motion carried. All right, we'll now move on to our third item, under notice of motion, 14.3. Councillor Summer, would you like to...
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Hopefully I get a second. I'd like to move the notice of motion as printed on page 132, the second one, that the council considered the development of a municipal walking strategy in conjunction with the Municipal Association of Victoria and other stakeholders. This walking strategy should be the foundation of our movement of place stra... Oh, actually, can I not move that, please, Madam Mayor? I think it needs more work. Can I lay it on the table? Just don't move it, I don't want to move it.
So this motion is withdrawn?
Yeah, withdraw, just not move.
Just not moving?
No, because our movement of place strategy is no longer, so I need to reword it.
All right.
Come back in a different...
All right. Okay, so this motion is not being moved at this stage?
No, no, I'm not moving it.
That's it. All right, item number 15, documents for signing and sealing, mail received. Item number 16.1, councillors' community interaction and briefing programme, there's a recommendation. Am I missing something? 16.1, yeah. All right, so the recommendation is on page 134, thank you. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I was happy to move that, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Giovinetti, you have more? And a second, councillor Adam? Councillor Giovinetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Not necessary, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, obviously, it's just a record of the community interaction and briefing programme by councillors, it's all there in front of you, you attended what and where.
Thank you. Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor O'Keeffe?
I think, Madam Mayor, I think it's actually important to note that there's hundreds of events that councils have attended during this time, so it's worth some of our visits in the gallery in time to go through that list and actually seeing a lot of the community engagement that councils get to have the opportunity to be involved in, and I think it's a very important part of the agenda, it's a very important part about being out in the community, it's something that I very much enjoy.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. 16.1, and... So next is item 17, urgent business not included on the agenda, nil. Is there any urgent business? Nil? All right, thank you. With that...
If you'd do a lot of nothing, just make a comment before we finish up today, would you like to wish Shirley and several officials leading council, how many years, 20, up to 20 years, so just thank her for her service in Greater Shepparton, come to the council and I wish her all the very best in her future endeavours and thank you for the support you give to councillors.
It's a hard job at times.
So best wishes to you, Shirley.
Thank you, thank you very much councillor O'Keeffe for making that statement and all the best to...